Question.
Yeah, presume this has been the ongoing problem for years ago.
Yes.
What's cast iron lines? Are cast iron lines now is what it's, cast iron line?
That's my understanding of it.
Which is, it's past its cycle. I mean, it's done.
Buildings are...
But the city, the city will reline those. If you can't reline a four inch line, the city will take it. There are lines enough, they come in and reline them. Is that now possible for a four inch line?
Reline with some kind of...
They take that stuff since they produce size and then reline the pipe all the way down. And they cut the, and then the machine goes on, that's why the third, the white comes in. And then my second question is, you said you're going to replace the four with two fours with names?
That's Silver's recommendation.
The two fours will flow in six, just fine. A six inch plastic will flow much better than six inch cast iron, so eight way over style. Two four inch pipe is still not the same size by ever, than eight, six inch inside.
Eight would be a lot bigger if it flowed.
Yeah, you take two fours, two fours, the inside angle, two fours, eight, six, nine or eight. And the, the plastic pipe will flow one point three, one point four times better than a cast iron pipe because of smooth cycle. And, but the problem is back in the justice jail, I remember it's like, everything had to be cast iron. They wouldn't allow you to use plastic if it was, this is the problem we're dealing now because they wouldn't allow you to use what they shouldn't use it.
Right, yeah.
But the air problem you guys just said would reuse the building. Every time I see this done, when you reuse a building, it always different, it always changes anyhow. So I'm not sure if it's worth dumping a ton of money and thinking to reuse the building exactly where the drains are at. Next back up there, everything changes anyhow, so probably drain line's no good at that point anyhow. Because nobody ever used the same building twice. That's a 20 year old building, 25 year old building where it is. Even use it for the same purpose, it'll be different, everything would be a different spot. I, it's, it's a tough situation. My knowledge of drains, but 10 years ago, you had a problem with it.
Yeah.
And they ran the thing. And even right, the bottom of the pipe is gone.
Yeah.
But I would think that much of the relining stuff, that's nothing the city did. Not reliance, that they didn't line it. Go down here and a machine go down, cuts it out and then just reline it smooth. So, I don't know what that section did because it's a really neat process they do.
So basically it plugs the whole thing?
It just go down in a, is there a half inch or a quarter inch line all the way around the pipe? All the way down, makes it smooth again.
Say that last part again, how do you want it? You said it went around the outside of the pipe?
Inside, inside the pipe, goes inside the pipe, just from the lining of the pipe, makes it smooth again.
So basically it reduces, ends up reducing the inside by half inch, you know, down to quarter inch radius. But, yeah.
Close so much better, they'd work better with four.
So I would think if it was smooth, it would flow much better than being rough all the way down and catching everything.
That's why a four inch, a four inch cast, a three inch plastic line would flow the same thing as four inch cast iron.
Is that right?
Because it's smoother than that, that's just normal plumbing, thanks.
And if they could do that, then you could get your whole thing redone and maybe the problem would go away. Instead of you're going to deal with it again when the rest of it starts going back.
And you might save 40,000 dollars from the inmates because they're going to be gone a couple days versus
Yeah.
three weeks. Now you're quarter, forty eight thousand, it sounds bad to me if they're going to tear that line up for reline at all. But if they can reline it, they can usually be out. Maybe they can't do one of those storms, you know, they think, I know they do six and eights in the suits. Delphi's had them before.
How long would it take to reline the pipe?
We just, they just put it in there, done it in a day.
A day?
Then they got a machine that goes down, we've got a Y, then actually got a T, then cuts that Y out for you. But I don't know if they'll do it for a four inch line.
Does it?
When it get, when it get all done, get that line, then they have, they're not cutting the Ys out of the way. And they got a machine that down, actually cuts those, you know, the Ts and the Ys in there to go.
So if I'm doing a section of pipe this long and I'm coming in from this way, does it start at this end and going back? Or does it start on that end and go in?
I don't, I never, I never see it done. Only if they, I'm going to see it done, curiosity says, they go for the manhole, they put the stuff down there, down there and reline it.
You say that.
Pipe, are we, were that area good in there? Is that why some...
It's, it's permanent.
The pipe's long.
It's, it's permanent, yeah. What do they do where each cell comes in?
That's why I say they got a machine, they down, cuts the Ts and the Ys in there, they can do it.
So they're going to have to reline each, reline each way out and then put the Ts back in?
Usually just do the main line, the Ts usually don't, I don't think you do it unless you go to the, the Ts like on a house. But the machine will down and cuts it out when you're done.
Cuts it out.
Yeah, cuts the T and the Y back out. So is that like, is that a spray on, spray on process?
I don't know, looks like a balloon almost that they put in and expand out and then cure it?
They cure it quickly, they just... Municipal is good all the time. But I think, need to rely on it too, they may not allow, may not be able to do storms on four inch.
I'm surprised it's only four inch long.
You could probably call the city guy, Aaron Nastor. Aaron or Dick Linsel, who's in charge of that. They, the city has done it before. Well, I can, I can surely investigate that, you know, when, I mean, again, I just, I don't want it to wave this thing off. I mean, I can work on that and come back to you, just in the county first.
We've got some time.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it would, it potentially obviously be cheaper in the long run if we find that this is feasible. So, uh, now when I saw that video, I thought, oh no.
Yeah, the plot you're moving was all right, the big background music was right there. Well, you gonna check into the relining thing and give it back to us and say the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
So we keep going?
Yes, most definitely.
I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ted Johnson. The, uh, particular which the, uh, Jim, the finance, the finance, the board, the, through the use of the Billy Corporation to, uh, which, uh, take title to the project and then lease it to the county. And the, uh, property, the idea behind that is, uh, the lease obligation is not considered a debt. And you hear the reason back there, and we need three names for Billy Corporation. We need, uh, three names for Billy Corporation. I have three, okay? Are they the ones that, uh, are they the ones that he gave me in February? And...
What about this right here, right now?
Right. I communicated with, uh, Mr. Paul Barnes of Turnerburg. And he said, Paul, chances of voice vote in the, in the, in the meeting, the officials made to make the members of the Billy Corporation. And we'll await the, uh, outcome of the, uh, special meeting on Wednesday before we do anything else. Because, uh, we use the procedures for incorporating after we're done. So, we won't schedule anything until after, after the council or the commissioners meeting on Wednesday to see where, where we're going from here.
There will be, there will be no necessary meeting of this Billy Corporation until after the...
Correct.
Well, uh, to name them, Jeff Watson, right here, Brett Reinhardt, and, uh, George Mears.
So all the ticket will be in motion and a second to vote.
Uh, my motion is to form. Corporation, the Billy Corporation, Jeff Wise, excuse me, Jeff Watson, George Mears, Brett Reinhardt.
I will second that, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 And since, uh, Jeff is here, none of the other, will you communicate those to the, the...
No, I can't. But at this point, I can't communicate with a date or a time for the meeting until after Wednesday, right?
I think I would wait until then. Okay.
Uh, Resolution of CARES Act.
This is to get the money out of the, uh, the fund that was established by the commissioners, ordinance, to receive the funds, the CARE Act funds. In order to get the money out, you can the general fund, the board needs to adopt this resolution.
Okay.
To the county general, from CARES to county general. I think, I think it's, like, not, you know, I think... We can adopt the resolution if we remember later. It's not as important as it is with an ordinance.
Do we need to read this resolution to the public?
No, it's, it's not necessary and it's, uh, it just, it's not an ordinance. It, it does not have to be read.
Well, like you say, what this does is take the money from this, uh, CARES Act, more or less grant, and put it into the general fund.
That's important.
So that's what we're doing with this. So I guess I would entertain a motion to endorse this, uh, resolution.
Absolutely.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's sign it. What's the, Beth, what's the resolution number on this?
I, I don't have it.
You'll add it in?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can I give you a little bit of what the number is? Oh, I can see the, what the number is.
Okay. Amendment for the 20, 20 capital improvement plan.
The capital improvement plan is the tool by which counties use it. And, um, the, uh, executive order that you have in front of there, in front of you, would amend the existing capital improvement fund to add the expenditure of $60,000 for, to match a grant for the construction of concession and residential facilities upon the Abbey and Living Memorial Park.
For those of you that were not here previously or at the last couple of meetings, we had, uh, uh, Mike Paddy come to us and he can get a grant that will double what they have if they can attain a certain amount of money. And they were about $60,000 short, the way I understood it from him, of, uh, being able to get this grant. And, uh, so we decided that, uh, that would be a good, an excellent use for our economic development funds since we have some, it was unspent. We have a pretty substantial amount unspent. And, uh, so we requested of the council that they allow us to spend $60,000 to the Abbey and Living Park. And, uh, the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce graciously provided us with a, uh, very nice, uh, overview of what kind of money this park would, uh, could potentially bring into the county. Uh, as far as bringing in lots of outside softball teams and things of that type. Uh, and how much those visits are worth to the county. And it, it is, uh, I know that the community of, uh, Westfield decided quite a while back that their main, uh, what their stick was going to be as far as, uh, you know, growth and economic development was going to be a huge sports complex there. And they would become the central Indiana's major, uh, amateur sports center. And it has worked for them, it has been very successful for them. And so this is a, us, economically a small way, but our economic development funds need not be spent only for something that's going to return dollar for dollar or a profit. They can be spent for, uh, uh, improvement of the community and improvement of quality of life and things like that, which this park with an amphitheater and ball diamonds and everything will certainly do. So we request to the council and they unanimously agree with us, so we appreciate that very much. And, uh, so we, we are going to be able to, to provide the Abbey and Living Park Foundation with $60,000 so that they can get $120,000 a match, which will help them quite a bit. Uh, so what we have before us here is, uh, we have a capital improvement plan for 2020 that we need to amend to make this all the paper trail one and it all is popping up. So I guess I need a motion, don't I, from the law to, uh, approve this order number 2020 dash zero, Board of Commissioners of Carroll County, uh, order amending and restating the Carroll County Capital Improvement Plan for 2020.
I don't believe that we need to, uh, the amendment.
Okay, I'll second it, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed. There's Mike signing the one. Okay, so we're down to other commissioners' actions. Approve extension contract services agreement. Beth, can you define this for us?
This is for the extension office with Purdue. And we sign this every year, it's just a finality that we need to have on here. Hold it down.
Our amount put into the, uh, extension educators is $46,414, is that right? Uh, well, that's what I'm, I'm reading on here, I'm just, the only question I had was, is that our amount or the provision amount we put in? I think it's our amount.
It did not increase from last year, it's the same as last year.
Does anybody have a comment on this? Would we should or should not? I think we should. And I will second that, uh, motion and call for a bill, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, uh, courthouse key for Cali Schimmel, Community Directions Director. Did, did we lose a key somewhere, I mean, or did they just add another person up there and so on?
When an elected official or anybody that has a key resigns, they have to turn in their key and then they have to be reused so that they can go back to work.
Okay, got it. What do you think, Lauren?
Well, I think the key...
Okay. I'll second that motion to allow a key to Cali. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Uh, courthouse usage application. This is from Babe Denny Photography, wants to use the courthouse during the hours of noon to 1:30 on Wednesday, December 16th. So that would be just right after we close. For a photo session. Number of participants will be four plus the photographer.
This has been approved by the custodian, uh, it's just not been signed, he might have, is not here, so it will be signed by him. He's already approved it.
He will by...
Has approved it, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll second it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Northwest Solid Waste reimbursement letter. Uh, this is our request for the Northwest Solid Waste to refund, or not ref- to fund us in the amount of $24,693.7 for our recycling operation. And transfer station operator, pay 60% of that salary and to do eco-shed twice out there. Uh, once out there and once for the Carroll County reporter. So, this is us requesting from them rather than us paying out. So we get $24,069.37. Any comment from anybody? Okay? Lauren, what do you think? Do you make the move on that motion? I'll second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. There you go. Uh, does anyone have anything they want to bring up to the commissioners? Yes, sir.
The CARES Act money comes from the federal government for COVID-19, how much is it?
Is he back there? There we are.
Which one? The first round that came in, the $652,996. And you say that's what came to, the state got over 300 million. And Carroll County got 652,996. City of Delphi got 90... If I knew you were going to ask, it's 90 some thousand. Of that 600? Of that 600 or above? No, they got their own pot of money. Burlington got their own pot of money, Florida got their pot of money. And it should be used for what? There was six cast irons that they could use it for. And then the state turned around and came back and said that you returned in initially for reimbursement for public safety salaries. And then at the end of the year, that it could be moved over to the county. It's all on the IFA's website under COVID.
Okay, are you, you, you done? Okay, yes.
I want to kind of go back and visit the jail a little bit. Thank you, Beth, for forcing me to use the microphone. I said I appreciate you letting me use the microphone today. Uh, first off, I question your toe on, uh, we're, has there been ongoing preventivements? Maybe would have prevented a bit of expense. We're there by here. And then, my other question is actually stemming from last, what was it, Thursday night of the jail meeting? Can you take added funds for just funding the jail?
Can you take out of county money for our jail?
Added money, economic development.
Added money.
Because it seems like your economic development or economic redevelopment was sitting on a pile.
Like a down redevelopment is sitting over pile.
Have you went after that?
That's the Tiff District, south of Tampa out here.
Right, but have you earmarked any of that for the jail?
Uh, we, we have questioned that and thought about it, but we have not taken any actions on it. And if it is my opinion, we should.
Well, shouldn't that be decided before we come forward with plans? I mean, $6 million...
I didn't get that Lisa, I'm sorry, that goes terribly here.
I know. We talked about that. The $6 million of the major, that's what they're sitting on, correct, Beth? That's what was recorded in the paper. Anything?
No.
Redevelopment?
Redevelopment, I think it's formal.
A redevelopment has $6 million. Can we grab any of that?
The redevelopment is the Tiff District. Okay, and they have a pretty nice pot of money for that.
Yeah, they do.
Now, they are using some of that for highway improvement out here. And I think they're going to have some, you know more about the Tiff District than I do, Tracy?
I was just thinking of the, I, I think they're going to use almost like, isn't it 2000 for the road, working up what they're going to start out there? So that's what they're doing, trying to talk about.
See, I didn't quite get on that, but...
We are using our microphones, if you guys want to speak, come out and give them a microphone and talk so everybody in the county report. Otherwise, I can hear, it's not even moving.
You're not, you're not in there, are you? You got the first here.
When you're asking about a financial plan for the jail in there, that's what the meeting is going to be Wednesday at 1 o'clock because the commissioners and the council are getting together. Because I completely agree, there needs to be a financial plan before we even start anything or make any plans because you got to know where this money's coming from or annually, how you're going to pay for this jail. So the meeting at 1 o'clock, I believe, is for us to discuss all that and to, to start a financial plan.
Right, right now, what we have done is find out how much it's going to cost. Because there's no use in doing financing when we don't have any idea what it's going to cost.
I know, you're right.
Okay.
That is really the question. We've spent a lot of money. A lot of money.
Yeah.
With no idea. I mean, I bet, uh, Paul said it does.
No idea what?
Of what we're going to end up with. I mean, the last meeting I went to where they talked about capulation was like 112 and it's going to be cut down. Then last Thursday, it was cut down to 108, but the price tag actually went up.
The price tag improved.
Went up.
Yeah, well, we got the business, we, we got a real number now.
But for that, it's reduced. I think you were at 112 and then you went to 108, which to me is still a little, but I'm not a believer of the jail. And that's before you even saved it.
The recent events in the 108, we could go to some reconstruction inside the jail that saves them.
What was that? Didn't save anyone.
Well...
Well, maybe the dead.
Yeah.
On the deaths, maybe the deaths will come at all.
You're, you're dealing with two different things there. You're dealing with
An estimate.
An estimate and here's the real cost now, Ben. So...
At least we don't know.
Yeah, this is, this is why it's really going to cost now.
Well, and further, is there a reason why it's been sitting around two years and did not capture any added money?
Well, yeah, there's a reason why we didn't capture it. Edit money because edit money's gone that fast in the summer. It's not going to pay for a jail.
But the redevelopment, we put it right there or not?
They have captured it. But it, we have to, the way I understand, taking direct notice, we have to request that money from the redevelopment authority, right?
Yes.
So it's not just us saying, well, we're taking that money. We have to work, we and the council have to work with them to get that money.
And is that something we're going to do?
I think that's what we're going to talk about on Wednesday, if that's what we're going to do. Uh, I think it's an excellent use of that money, especially since, well, mon- because money's money and this is county money. And I think it should go towards that. But I, it also is right out there in the, in the Tiff District, so...
Well, and the other thing I would mention is, most recently in the Tiff County moves, they're not expanding their jail. They're expanding some work release and... They're expanding some work release and rehabilitation, which you guys still haven't talked remotely about. Although, in the debate bill, you felt ninety percent of the problems were drugs. Hope you haven't addressed that at all. Correct? What you said, bring the debate.
Okay. A work release program is often been thrown out as a panacea of this is gonna fix everything. And it won't cost anything. And both of those are wrong. It costs a, a great deal. And it, in fact, is pretty close to the cost of just regular incarceration because of all the extra, uh, staff you have to have. And you have to have space for it to be in and all those things. Now, to say we haven't talked about, we talked about it a lot. There's only, to me, there's only so many nuts you can crack at one time. And the first thing we gotta look at is just pure jail settlement. And then we can look at if we're going to add on, uh, and jump in any time you want, you know, Lauren. But we can, we can, uh, talk about work release, which may very well be a very good program. Some of the sheriffs I've talked to, none of them had enthusiastic about it. Uh, and I have talked about work release back, at least three sheriffs going back to it. And we went through a building with a former sheriff and looked at it and have put numbers down and tried to figure out what it would cost and all that. And it is not a money-making thing. Everyone's probably thinking, well, you make money out of this because they have to pay to get work release. That never works, you know, we, we always wind up paying more.
And that I agree with. I mean, it's, it's not, it doesn't have any greater success than jail. As far as facilities, we heard that. The guy from Tiffin County, but they were really rich. They wanted, they were using a lot of grants, so they weren't making any money and they weren't self-sufficient.
Okay.
But then still, I go back to, what is your plan for the drug issues? I mean, you can jail while you want, but at some point you gotta let out. And you have not addressed that. Although, like I said, you're based, you said, guys, when you respond to the problem for the thieves and you listed.
I think, I think, I know. I, that is my opinion that the drug issue in this county is the driver of almost all crime that we have.
I don't know if Tobe's still over there, but I think you could probably agree.
If, if we could just magically wave a wand and get rid of all the drug issue, we'd probably, we wouldn't have to go to new jail. We would have, we would have a lot of things again, but, but we have that issue. And I don't know what the solution to it is. Uh, I don't know. We could ask Tobe, a professional here. Tobe, how do you fix a drug problem in the county?
We know incarceration does not work.
Yes, I have an opinion as far as, on the flip side of it, I've always felt, much like alcohol, it boils down to the individual. If they want to seek the help and, and they have something in their heart that they want to be cured of the issue they have, they'll pursue it. Part of the issue we have, the fact we just had one earlier this week. He's, he's part of, and I, I don't mean this to be humorous, but he's part of what I refer to as our revolving door program. His end is out, his end is out, numerous times. And so I kinda put some of the responsibility back on the individual. And what they want to do. We, you know, the state has a number of programs. We have, you know, as part of our mental health of the jail, we have mental health, uh, available to individuals that, but they have to ask for it. They know it's available to them. But part of that mental health program also addresses issues related to drugs. And I can't tell you exactly what percentage actually participate in the mental health, but it's, it's a pretty sizable number. But again, at the end of the day, in my opinion, it boils down to the individual. Do they want the help? And it boils down to what they wanna do for themselves.
Would you say what we're offering now, it is easy for them to get that help? Or no?
Yeah, actually, our, our mental health program, when, while they're still in jail, that one-on-one with, with a counselor takes place. Again, if that individual asks for it, puts in a request for it, and to add to that, they are aware of that they have to make that request. And then our mental health end offers them programs that, once they're out of jail, they can follow through on their own. Again, the responsibility falls back on the individual.
Would you say though, Tobe, since, since Bill brought up your, and I, let's not use the revolving door person. But would you agree that most, uh, and I know you will, because we've already talked about it. This becomes a cyclical thing. And so really, spending twenty million is not gonna prevent a juvenile problem. And we, we haven't even really, I've not heard another type of juvenile.
Well, obviously, county jails are, particularly ours, are built for the adult population.
But do we have an escalating juvenile problem? He says we're building a hundred and eight, I mean, that kind of expects fulfillment.
Yeah, I, I don't know about the juvenile issue. I think, again, going back to what Bill said, it's a reoccurring issue, it's a drug issue. Drug and alcohol. In, in the adult space.
So essentially, we're failing at that, as a county of twenty thousand people. Most ever in county?
Uh, I'd say, really, uh, it's been some time goes since I've checked these numbers. But at one time, uh, just as a, an easy example, the number of individuals, the number of easy to write use was, uh, six out of ten that we had in jail is our facility, were from out of county. And not actually Carroll County presidents, per se. So as I've said for a number of years, we have our issues here in the county, we're bound and bound. But a lot of it also relates to, and I'm not knocking the Hoosier Heartland, but when they put that new highway through, part of that, the issues to be allowed there, Logan's Ward or any other parts of the state came into this.
But it's boiling down to, that problem is going down to taxpayers becoming essentially the parents to make sure they have food and
And that's.
healthcare, everything that you get at home is not getting because we're incarcerating the parents.
Yeah. So, yeah.
Again, I'm not in favor of it. I think it's way, way, way over, no, way, way, way more expensive than it used to be. And I don't think the public is really been given a fair shake. As far, I mean, I know you guys think, you've had all these meetings, all these meetings. But a two-day notice is pretty insignificant when you're spending twenty million dollars. And again, you just did another two-day notice. And, you know, you're not prepared to do the meetings. Obviously, we can't hear. You know, it's, it's not a decision you guys need to make. Because it doesn't matter. The worst thing that happens if you don't move on to jail in the timeframe they could totally set out is your bids aren't good. So you re-bid it. I mean, to me, to me, house arrest is the best solution. They're at home, we don't need staff, we need to work front. Which you don't pay overtime. But anyway, that's all I have.
As commissioners, we're responsible for jails up there. The state, they, there's some legislation for commissioners to provide recovery and state statute. We can't nobody's gonna end it till we, uh, know. We're responsible for the jail. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Wednesday's meeting, you know, everybody talks about price of jail, it doesn't concern me at all. Same way in my business, I don't care about spending money, I care about what's it'll cost me two years from today in this jail's operation, what's our county budget gonna look like? Is those numbers gonna be available Wednesday too? We're gonna have where it's, where it is today, where it's gonna be. I'm concerned about the operational cost of, overall cost, not just the cost of the building. So those numbers gonna be available too Wednesday at the meeting?
What I, what I got out of that, Jeff, was that you're concerned about how much it's gonna cost.
I'm concerned about what the Tulsa County budget will look like two years from today compared to today. When, when a jail's operating, what will our budget look like compared to income? What will it look like tax increase on property? Where will the numbers look then? Overall?
Yeah, as far as operational or? Yeah, as far as operational.
I talked about operation of whole county. What's the number gonna look like two years compared to today? You know, when I buy a new truck, I don't care what it costs me. I care about what it costs every month. When I buy a new piece of property, what's it cost every month? So the overall budget of the county in two years from today, what's it gonna look like with the new jail operation? That concerns me more than the fourteen million you've spent for jail. You can, it's okay to figure out pay for jail, but you gotta figure out pay for everything else.
I understand.
And do we have those costs?
I don't have those costs.
I was gonna say, that's the question.
I think Jeff could tell us how much more staff. It would be difficult for him. Now, there's some jails at Adams County, they're not even running full staff. And they're getting by, so I don't know. That's, that's all I have to share about that much of jail.
I, I think we have looked at those things from the standpoint of, we are building a jail that is, in my opinion, if we do build a jail, we will be building a jail that is absolutely the most efficient that it can be as far as a jailer, how many people they can effectively watch, uh, you know, uh, medical, all those kind of things we have to provide. We are providing space for that so we don't have to take people out to go to it. I think there's a lot of savings in this jail. Now, is it gonna cost more? Yeah, it's gonna cost more than this jail costs. But, but we, what I haven't heard said here anywhere is that all it would take is one ruling by a federal judge and we're up the creek. And they have done that in the state. They have said, you will build this jail and here's how big you're gonna build it. And it was taken completely out of the commissioner's hands and just turned over to the judge and he said, okay, people of, say Carroll County, this is what you're gonna buy. And we don't have anything to do about that. And so I think that we need to be, and I, I really, I've heard the word proactive so many times, I hate to use it. But we need to be active ahead of the curve here before we get, that is an imminent problem. That is, with the liberal judges and stuff that we have, that is a re- very real problem of any prisoner down here filing a suit. And, of course, they all will file suit, every one of them. And, uh, it goes to a federal court and we have to then comply to a federal order, which could run our jail to thirty-five days just like that. It happened in Terre Haute, it's happened in other counties. I don't wanna get in that situation. I wanna build a minimal jail for this. Now, we could have built a fifty-capacity jail, but what's the use of that? I mean, uh, what's the cost of that? Well, the cost for bed would be outrageous because that's one of the things that came up at the last meeting was, why, why does a two-hundred-bed facility not cost a great deal more than a hundred-and-five-bed facility? Well, because there's so much of it, it's the same thing in there. You know, your, your commissary area, your, 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 your interrogation rooms, all that stuff. A matter of scale is cheapens it per bed. But in my mind, someplace around a hundred beds was about the equilibrium point of getting what we need and not overbuilding what we need. Now, I, I don't doubt that, as Sheriff said, that Hoosier Heartland or us having to handle things that are not based within our county, but just come into our county. I don't doubt that, that my kids or your kids or the grandkids are gonna have to be looking at building another jail. I doubt if this will last for forty years like this one does. I, I just, in May, but I don't have a crystal ball that says that, I just kinda doubt it.
But that's Jeff's point. You, you guys collectively, not drawing any names.
Okay, I'm not getting it.
I said collectively, and that's, that's Jeff's point. You guys have been very adamant about not outsourcing.
Not what?
Not outsourcing.
Right.
Prison transport, um, food and beverage, the food, and those services. But those are benefits and salaries that stay on the, on the taxpayer. I mean, we're gonna pay for the service either way. But we're not gonna then have to pay for benefits over time and whatnot. You contract that service and you guys have been very adamant that you don't wanna outsource that. So see, that tells us as taxpayers, that cost is gonna continue to rise. Because you've given raises in bulk, well, like tax or local prosecutor, they was giving bonuses. So there hasn't been real open-mindedness about how the jail could become affordable with lower county payroll. That's totally not what you know. And, and like I said, I'm not in favor of the jail. I think there's other ways utilizing house arrests and electronics to alter behavior.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, Lisa, but I still get to tell the model in my seventy-two-year-old years, but I think I got in there, but you think we need more electronic or we need to outsource more?
I think incarcerating a drug addict with the limited amount of drug rehab that we offer is gonna prevent him from, four months after his probation is over, uh, coming right back to the jail. I don't think he's there. So why not just pay, incarcerate him at his own house? I mean, why be a jailer and all the others in the home to prepare him for a guy that's basically like Tobe said?
So it'd be cheaper just to shoot him, right?
I didn't say that. I said incarcerate him at home. That's up to you and Jeff, I do. I'm just saying house arrest is not.
Yeah.
Well, my question is, how many enter jail incarcerated or just drug use as opposed to every other charge that's in there right now? My question to you is, even if we put them on house arrest, aren't we still paying someone within the county to check on them? And who's to say that even though they're in their house, they're still not using drugs? So what is the purpose?
Jail has that worked. We, we funded that jail for four years and it has not worked.
But I agree with Tobe, it's how to use her to want to quit. If they don't want to quit, they're not going to quit. So like he said, they're going to continue to roll revolver rules.
I'm gonna stop, I disagree that jail does not work. Jail does work because it puts a wall up a big hit when they hit the point that they're using drugs and they're doing things wrong. Without that wall, they don't wanna change. And the point they hit the wall, they decide, do that, do something different.
In that case, we would have a high risk, because it's a wicked.
Absolutely, there is a problem. There's absolutely a problem. There's a problem, first response is, he will keep using drugs because they don't understand what else to do.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Lisa.
I am.
I've got a couple of things that I just wanna bring up myself. One was, I, uh, have been concerned about our policy of, uh, how, how we have the courthouse locked up. And, uh, I, I wanna say that, uh, uh, the way it's being done now is, is my fault. Because Lauren didn't want us to close the law lower and, and, well, I don't speak for you, but, uh, if you can do it better than I can, but, uh, I had Dr. Dutter call and, uh, he is I don't wanna misrepresent him either. The way I understood it, Dr. Dutter, was that he does not think that it is right to keep the door locked and keep people out cold before they come in. He doesn't, he does not think that that was part of his suggestion to me about changing the method of operating in courthouse. And also, he feels like that using a mask and having the shields up in every office is inadequate protection for people coming in. Now, I don't know nothing about viruses to be able to, to argue with him, of course, about that. But I, I am really concerned about the factor that the other day I came up, well, it was the day we had the, uh, the last meeting in here. And I came up to come in the door, there was five or six people out there, it was a cold day, and they were a cold day, and they were shivering outside the door, waiting to get in. And I, you know, I could look inside, and here's this warm rotunda area and all that in there, and I'm thinking, why do we have these people outside? And, uh, I, I'm worried about the tail wagging the dog here. We are here to serve the people of Carroll County, and I don't think we're serving them right by keeping it locked out of the door. That's, I guess, where I'm interested about. Now, Beth, you can argue with me on this, and I take, I take your...
I was not going to argue.
Well, no, I'm not saying that negatively, I'm saying, I like your ideas, you've come up with a lot of good ideas.
Well, what I was going to say is, they are requested to make an appointment, and each department head has instructed them to do that. The phone numbers are on, they don't have to stand, are on the door, they don't have to stand outside, they can go to their car, and then, and that's what they should have been advised, our people are.
And then you call them, do you?
No, they call us, and then we'll tell them we'll be there at a certain time, and, you know, they have to make the appointment. That's what the whole shebang was about, but we have had employees just let them in lily-milly too, and then, you know, and that's not correct either. So we're not making them just stand outside. When they come in, they come in with a double doors. But a lot of the public is not, um, reading or doing the instructions either, they're all on the door about where to go, whether the public's supposed to go to the east door and have their appointment with their department head. A lot of times, they, the department head will take them up to their, their, um, office, because they can't give everything down there. But I just want you to know that they're not making them stay outside, that is their role.
Well, there was one young lady, it was one of the bunch that I met out there, I didn't know any of the people waiting on her, but she'd been ordered by the court to, uh, make child support payment, and I think this was her first payment of ever doing it. And, uh, so she came in to make her payment. The court had not told her anything about it, other than just come in and make her payment. So she's standing on her, she had no idea what, who to call, anything.
The numbers are on the door, and I, I mean, she could have called the clerk's office and said, "Men, men, I come in to make a payment." I mean, I'm sure that the court said, you know, you are to make payments, but it doesn't say, "Men to make those payments," or like at a time, or for what. So, there's a lot of variables out there, and I, I understand what you're concerned, you know, I, I had a young man come in, because he had four. He was very worried that he was here, and nobody was paying attention to him, and I said, "Let me call the judge." So I just, brought him inside, I called the judge, and he said, "Just tell him to call us on Monday, but the girls are here." That's when we would close the door. And that's what we did, and he was very, I think he showed him a link, um, the text message from the judge, and then he was all okay. But sometimes, it's just how you approach that person, and...
Oh, yeah.
We're all trying to help, and our people, we don't like any more extension anymore. I mean, we send them the extension, and we can send them back to us, or they can bring it in, or put it in the drop box, or we tell them that they can go online. Those are certain things that we kind of establish, probably will continue, because we just never know.
Is there a way though, Beth, when you put chairs in the front, and let people wait there?
I don't know. I was told by someone who can help, probably that's the only purpose, so I, I don't know.
Even Dr.?
But...
The, the top there, Dr. Dutter, said he, he is concerned about that. He, he do not intend on people to stand outside, or do anything, so. I would like to look at that situation, or, like, even weigh in on all this, uh, kind of guy.
I don't know, but they don't argue.
I think it's just personal responsibility, uh, reaching together, you know? I think the mask, fabric, causes critical conditions for people. Personally, myself, I like my oxygen. I like breathing the same stuff, I mean, that means ironies and germs and stuff like that, people. I get sick, I don't want to. I take vitamins, that's the thing, I take vitamins. I don't, I don't live with fear in my life, my life, like I'm short, because I don't want to live in the fear that I have left. It hurts me to see these businesses around town. It's home business I'm, I'm concerned about. Go to Walmart, but you can't go in a restaurant, or you go to a restaurant, but you got to wear the mask, take it off, once you get in there. I, I just, I don't know. The guys walking around feared, I, I just, I don't know about that. Sorry. It's my answer. I don't know about that.
I guess what we've been...
I don't know what you said.
...on is that we, we're not doctors, and we're not nurses, and we are trying to get our direction from the health department. And when they tell us to wear masks, we wear masks. They tell us that it's going to be by appointment, we got that on the wheel, and that's what happened, so, um...
I think the courthouse out there, you know, trying to get all the people's business to the courthouse.
But they're not.
They take precautions, they put a mask on, uh, you have precautions in your office, key disinfects, they have it. We take precautions, sir. People can take their own precautions, take the vitamins, whatever, decide they want to do.
I'm not trying to argue with you.
No, I'm not, thanks to me, my boss.
But just, you know, my thought's on, same thing, but we are not hurting the public because we have, we have them in recordings, we come in special for them, and then they don't even show up with their recordings. So, um, we, we have served the public, it's better that we serve the public than ourselves. I mean, you know, our work might get me on, but we have served the public.
I, with the numbers going up, I don't see how things are working, like, except for full circle, the mask, the social system. The numbers supposedly gone up, I don't understand how to, try to do what you do, and numbers go up.
I, I don't want to beat this dog too long, but I know that this, this type of mask, ninety-seven point three percent permeable to, uh, virus. So, you're going to cut out less than three percent of the virus while we're in there. And I know that, uh, uh, well, I, I never can figure out how that, if I'm standing up in a restaurant, then I need to wear a mask, but if I'm sitting down, I don't have to. I, the altitude doesn't come through to my mind here for this thing. But anyway, I, uh, I did not call Dr. Dutter, he called, and, uh, he, he was concerned that, uh, his recommendations were being misinterpreted. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and I'd like for us, a future meeting to talk more about this, uh, is I still am in favor of making this room into the commissioner's room. Just because, yeah, I, I'm wondering though, if you carpeted, how much that alone would change this ring, if you just had carpeted? If not, putting some acoustical absorption down the wall back here, but it seems like, look, here, we couldn't get all these people in upstairs, you know, and I'm concerned with open door, not just as it relates to having a newspaper here, I'm concerned with open door as far as letting all the people know, letting everybody wants to come to a meeting, come to a meeting, letting you come in and ask questions, as we just had, and, and having a, a debate, or, you know, hearing everybody's views, and, uh, I think this is the way to do it. So I, I'm, I'm not saying, let's vote today, I'm saying, I, I'd like to think about this again. This, this was built as an auditorium, uh, we have looked at it for many different purposes, and every time it comes down to, well, like when the judges looked at it the last time, they said, "We don't want to cut this room all up, because it's too beautiful," you know, "it's, it's architecture wonderful." To put low ceilings in here, divide it all up, we don't, we don't want to do that. To build a, uh, twenty-first century brick building, a twenty-first century building, we didn't think was right, and I don't either. But I, I, and if the council wants to keep their room up where the commissioners are, that's fine with me, um, but I think we need a room, it's an auditorium, and I think that the commissioners ought to meet in the auditorium, is I guess what I would say. I don't, I'm not thinking of this being solely, I think this should be used for voting, I think it should be used for all sorts of things, but I think it should be used as a grand room like this, for everybody to be able to meet. And I, I know right now, when we're having a big meeting, we have to schedule time in the, in the circuit courtroom, to have enough seating capacity. We could have more seating capacity here than they have in the courtroom. And I, I don't think we have to do anything other than just maintenance, just painting. You know, the last time, uh, we had several comments on how the radiators were just banging away the whole time. They've got the water out of them now, and, and got steam into them now, and I have heard them bang once, which will be rather than every fifteen seconds banging away, so I, I appreciate the work that they've done, and it's nice and warm, it's well-conditioned, yes.
I was concerned if I had a night in the meeting for security. If you could figure out what set of restrooms over here, if you shut the courthouse off at night, just have the meetings here, would it be a lot better? You wouldn't need to pay somebody out here for security, you'd get the heat done, go out, turn the lights off, you leave, and that'd make more sense. You know, they say they have somebody watching them, but he could sneak in here night in.
That, that is a hundred percent correct, other than, what about restrooms?
That's what I said, put a set of restrooms here somewhere, where you can lock it off on the rest of it.
Are you saying, put one in here?
Put a set of restrooms here, here, just for this, so we could, we could leave and shut the courthouse off at night, have a meeting here, people come in and go, check light off, you leave, you're done.
Yeah. There's all kinds of meetings too, you know, I mean, the, the public shouldn't be interested in those, the alcohol members commission meetings, there's the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, Jeff district meetings, there's all kinds of meetings, free development meetings that, uh...
And they're always paying someone to be here at night to babysit, you wouldn't need that, if that's the case here.
Well, this is just kind of a thought, a few thoughts.
Whatever you do, it does have sound system and video.
What'd you say?
It does, it has sound system, so that each of you guys are aligned. Because one person does not carry even with a microphone.
I, I think what you're saying, because there's the same old problem, I can't understand it, we should have somebody professionally come in here, set up a system where we have microphones in front of us, and a really good speaker system all around.
And a nice screen that everybody can see.
Yeah, I just went down and bought this one day, uh, Guitar Center in Indianapolis, so we had a speaker system in here. There's no forethought in it, I just thought we needed to have something, uh, you know, this is not good enough for in here.
Well, the meeting last Thursday was terrible. You know, you couldn't hear anything, and to me, it wasn't really a meeting, it was a meeting for you guys, but the public didn't pay anything. Because you couldn't hear.
Okay, anything else come for commissioners? I entertain all your, your... Motion is adjourned, second, all the fit for CI, Richard. Thank you all for coming.